Good afternoon and welcome to our first public hearing on the five-year consolidated plan and 2018 action plan for housing and community development. I'm Angie Hubbard, the Director of Community Development for the Metropolitan Development and Housing Agency. We've prepared this five-year plan and action plan on behalf of the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County. So before we get started, I wanted to review our agenda and go over a couple of housekeeping measures. As you entered the room, there are two packets of information for you to pick up. One are the sample of the slides with an outline for you to make notes, and the other is a two-page fact sheet. Also, please remember to sign in. Today, we're going to be reviewing the five-year consolidated plan, how it's organized, and some highlights from the plan, as well as the priorities that have been identified. We're also going to talk specifically what we're going to do with our 2018 funds, how you, the public, can comment on the draft plan, and then at the conclusion, I'll take any questions or comments on the plan. If you would please hold any questions or comments until the end, I will make sure to get with you. So we're going to start with an overview of the consolidated plan. Metro Nashville receives direct allocations from HUD for four grant programs. The Community Development Block Grant. This is a wide-ranging grant that can fund housing rehab, public services, public facilities that benefit low and moderate income areas, and some economic development. All of the Community Development Block Grant funds must assist people or areas where the median income is below 80% of the area median income. Next, we receive funding from the Home Investment Partnership Program. This is the only source of federal funds Nashville receives directly to do new construction for affordable housing. Homeownership housing is targeted to households with incomes below, at 80% or below area median income, and renters with incomes at 60% or below of the area median income. The Emergency Solutions Grant is fully dedicated to addressing persons that are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And then our fourth grant is to serve persons or families of persons with HIV or AIDS through the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. So every five years, HUD requires Nashville to prepare a plan that describes the priorities on how we're going to use these funds to address housing and community development needs. Our five-year consolidated plan begins on June the 1st and will run through May 31st of 2023. So the consolidated plan is organized according to a template that HUD provides, and that's how the table of contents and the sections are organized. Within the five-year plan, we have an executive summary. We describe the process. That's all the steps and measures we took to gain public and stakeholder input into the development of the draft plan, as well as how we're going to take input while the draft is available for public comment. We have a full needs assessment on housing, homelessness, non-housing, community development, which are things like public services, public facilities, public improvements, and then housing for special needs populations such as person, such as housing for persons with AIDS. We follow that with a market analysis. And then finally, the strategic plan. And the strategic plan is where we outline the priorities of the consolidated plan, including any specific areas of Davidson County where we want to target these funds. Near the end of the document is the 2018 action plan, and that specifically outlines how we're going to use these funds for the program year that starts on June the 1st and runs through May 31st of 2019. We also have a series of appendices and exhibits to supplement the plan. So I want to start out with some highlights, first on the process. And this diagram shows everything that goes into creating a consolidated plan. So we have our data that's compiled through our needs assessment and our market analysis, and supplemented where we can with local data. We have local plans and reports. There have been several reports done throughout the county on housing and poverty, such as the annual community needs evaluation conducted by Metro Social Services, and the Mayor's Housing Nashville Report. Other reports are also built in here, the five-year public housing plan. We had five work group meetings. So to help guide this plan, several of our colleagues in metro agencies came together to meet monthly to make sure that we were aligning our data and our initiatives and making sure that we weren't duplicating efforts. We held seven community meetings throughout the county and had 13 stakeholder meetings. Between the community meetings and stakeholder meetings, we had over 200 people participate. 185 of those are unduplicated. We also issued a survey on March the 16th that ran through April 13th on housing and community development needs, and we had 201 responses. Finally, we have a series of public hearings. We started on March 1st with a kickoff public hearing to talk to the community about what the consolidated plan is, introduce them to our process, and talk to them about how they can participate. Now that the draft is released, we have started on what is our first of four public hearings on the draft plan. All of these will go into our final consolidated plan that will be formed after the conclusion of the public comment period. Highlights from our needs assessment. First, I want to talk to you about the data. When we do the consolidated plan and we use the HUD template, HUD gave us data to fill in our tables. The data that HUD gave us are based on the 2009-2013 American Community Survey Five-Year Estimates, and 2009-2013 Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy. As you can imagine, these two data sources are a bit dated, where we can supplement with more current ACS data, we have, and that's noted in the document, and with the more current CHAS. So the most current ACS data is 2012 to 2016. The most current CHAS data is 2010 through 2014. Sometimes, we didn't have that data available, but we presented data alternatively to tell the same story so that we can have a more current picture of the needs in Davidson County. So here's a highlight. From two, over the 16 years HUD gave us baseline data for 2000. The area median income grew from a little over $39,000 to now over $50,000. And that's for a family of four. However, at the same time, the percent of individuals living in poverty has increased from 13% to 17.7%. The most common housing problem for all households in all income ranges is cost burden. However, its severe cost burden is the most common problem for renters and households with incomes at 0 to 30% of the area median income. So what cost burden is, it means that someone, a household, is paying more than 30% of their gross income on housing costs. Severe cost burden means they're paying more than 50%. This isn't anything that's unusual. I think this has been just substantiating previous studies that have already come out in the city. For our market analysis, and this is a table that's a little hard to read, but it is in your plan. One of the things we were asked to do is talk about public resources, federal, local, and state, that can help address some of the housing needs. We've created a table to look at different ways to address the housing needs by income range with the different resources. Some of these are very limited, some are through this plan, but we tried to capture as many of the public resources that we know are available. Whatever column a resource is listed in, that is the highest income range that can be served. So for example, resources listed in the 81% to 120% AMI can be used to address incomes at lesser percents of the area median income. However, those that are listed in the 0 to 60% of the AMI column, that is the maximum income range that can be assisted. Here are some highlights from our market analysis. One of the things we were also asked to do is look at the number of low-income housing tax credits or project-based rental assistance units that could be lost during our consolidated plan five-year period. And I'm not talking about the PBRA units that MDHA is converting to under RAD. These are privately owned. There are potential of over 4,000 existing affordable units that could be at risk of losing affordability during the five-year consolidated plan period, meaning that the owners can opt out of their contracts or their compliance periods have been released. Here are some tables on what it costs to pay for housing in Davidson County. The median contract rent, based on our most recent data, is $756. That does not tell us for what size unit. There are some, there are some ACS, there is ACS data available. On down, we look at the number and percent of renters and how much they pay on, that's the second table, for rent. Then the third table is the most interesting, and that is housing affordability for both renters and owners at area median income range. And I will clarify that the term HAMFI, H-A-M-F-I, means the same thing as area median income for the purpose of this plan, and that means household area median income for the Nashville-Davidson Metropolitan Statistical Area. So you can see the lower the income, the less likely that housing's going to be affordable. It's only affordable to 7% of renters with incomes at or below 30% of the area median income, and it's only affordable for renters at, 25% of renters at 50%, and 10% of homeowners at 50%. It is, there's no data available for homeowners at 30% of the area median income, and you'll see throughout the plan that it's very unlikely that renters in this income range own homes. So we use the needs assessment, the market analysis, input we captured through our community meetings, our stakeholder meetings, and our survey to come up with six priorities for the consolidated plan. The first one is twofold. We want to increase the number of decent, safe, affordable units. That's physical units. But we also want to help low and moderate income households access those units. So it's helping them overcome barriers so that those in most need can actually get into the housing. Likewise, the second priority is twofold. We want to preserve existing affordable housing units. Again, we're talking about physical housing stock, but we also want to help low and moderate income households retain housing. That means housing stability. We don't want anyone to have to lose their housing if, if there can be some interventions, because once housing is lost in this income range, as we will see through our market analysis and needs assessment, it's very difficult to obtain again. Our third priority is to support facilities and services for homeless persons and persons with AIDS. The fourth one focuses on creating pathways to self-sufficiency for low and moderate income persons and families. The fifth one, to revitalize distressed neighborhoods and underserved areas. And number six is our grant management for oversight and management of these four grant programs. We also have geographic priorities, where we want to target some CDBG funds, and we'll dive into each one of these separately, but I wanted to define them here. CDBG target areas? There are 26 census tracts currently in Davidson County in which 70% of the households have incomes at or below 80% of the median income. We also have an area, the Napier-Sudicum-Choice Neighborhoods area. MDHA in 2016 received a Choice Neighborhoods planning grant to help revitalize the area around the Napier-Sudicum public housing and then the adjacent neighborhoods. Then we have housing target areas. These are 14 council districts where there was at least a 40% increase in property values based on the 2017 reappraisal. We also added in areas where MDHA-owned public and affordable housing is located. And I say, refer to MDHA-owned housing as public or affordable as we've transitioned under the rental assistance demonstration. It's technically no longer public housing, but is known as affordable housing. Doesn't look like our map has shown up on the PowerPoint as clearly, but it is provided in the draft plan. These are the 26 census tract numbers that are in the CDBG target areas. This map is updated as we received a comment that there was a shaded census tract that should not have been, but these are the correct census tracts and the correct map. This is the boundary of the Napier-Sudicum-Choice Neighborhoods planning area. We will be applying for status for a neighborhood revitalization strategy area, which is called an NRSA. It's a special designation under CDBG. We'll submit that application along with this consolidated plan. But as you can see, the circle that's in the top-left corner, the brown-shaded area, that's the MDHA-owned public housing of Napier and Sudicum, and then you can see around it, we pick up a lot of single-family homes and some commercial along Lafayette, and then back into the neighborhood. This is a list of the 14 council districts that are in the housing target areas. This is just an overall map of all council districts, not just the 14, but this is a list from, ranked from the highest increase to, in descending order, but all of them had increases in property values above 40%. It also should be noted that some of these are also in the top council districts for building permits pulled, as well as for property standard violations. All of these indicators of gentrifying neighborhoods. Now we're going to move into the overview of the action plan. So an action plan is the annual update to this five-year plan. Program year one is the 2018, which starts on June the 1st. The action plan serves as Nashville's application every year for CDBG home, ESG, and Hopwa. While these are formula-based allocations, we do have to submit these plans or we will not get funding. This is where we actually provide the allocations and specific project budgets, and our 2018 action plan covers the period from June the 1st until May 31st, 2019. We actually have real allocations to report in our draft plan. Where in previous years, it's been estimates. On May the 1st, HUD released their notice of allocations for 2018, and so we are very pleased to report that over 2017, we've had an increase of about 1.3 million, roughly over $400,000 for CDBG, over $600,000 for home, a little over $7,000 for ESG, and maybe $200,000 for Hopwa. So this is a busy spreadsheet, but this breaks down the CDBG budget. We're going to dive more into how our budgets address the priorities a little later on, but this is everything. So the, the top set of numbers is, are the categories: administration and planning, housing, public services, public facilities and improvements, and economic development. The subsequent rows specify the specific activities. Our administration and planning cannot exceed more than 20% of our total grant plus the program income, and our public service activities cannot exceed more than 15% of the grant plus program income. Within the action plan, there is a section called the AP35, where you can get greater detail on these project descriptions, how, how funds will be released, whether it'll be undertaken by MDHA or through a competitive opportunity, and more about the time period and populations targeted. You'll see under economic development, we have a Section 108 loan repayment of over $560,000. This is for a Section 108 loan that was undertaken in 1998 to acquire property along the East Bank. This is our very last year. This loan will be paid off in August, and once that's paid off, the over $560,000 will be available in subsequent years to program for activities. This is our home budget. We have focused home on new construction, as our needs assessment and market analysis indicate. We have, and our number-one priority is to build new affordable housing. We have fully dedicated home to new construction. We have a new activity in home. We heard a lot from some of our nonprofit partners in the past year, and even through our discussions during the pre-draft phase. We do competitive opportunities, but some of our smaller nonprofits aren't able to compete with larger nonprofits or the for-profits that submit applications. So we're making a new program available to set aside home funding for nonprofits that have not received home in the past five years and have participated in the nonprofit capacity building program that the Barnes Fund offers. I'm going to go back to CDBG for one second. If you look under the CDBG housing activities, we have over $2 million program for rehab. So that's where homeowner rehab comes into play. Historically, we've budgeted 35% of CDBG funds for housing. This year, we are at 50%. Moving on to our ESG and Hopwa budgets, and we will release RFPs for the award of funds for these specific activities. So now I'm going to really get into how do we really use this money to address these goals? So the next series of slides, not only has the 2018 budget and goals, but what we hope to accomplish over the five-year period if, and this is a big if, funding is level. This is the first year in many years we've seen funding increases. It's actually been going down, so we're going to be hopeful that if we put it in writing, it'll stay there. So as you can see, we're going to use home, again, to address priority number one on increasing the number of physical units. You see our year-one goals. For the second part of priority one, the helping low and moderate income households access affordable housing, we'll program CDBG funding for fair housing activities. This is to help persons with a protected characteristic who need housing the most overcome housing barriers so that they can access the new housing. You also see on the far right, the income target. So you can see rental is targeted for persons with incomes 60% or below, homeownership at Priority two, again, twofold with the homeowner, with rehab programs to preserve existing affordable housing, and then helping maintain housing stability. This is where some of our priority geographic areas come in. We propose over $200,000 to target to homeowner rehab for the single-family homes in the Napier-Sudicum-Choice Neighborhoods planning area. Then we propose over $1 million to target homeowner rehab in these 14 council districts where we saw the increase of affordable housing. If we don't have enough interest in these areas, we can go countywide. This is our first preference. This is where we'll market. This is where we'll do heavy outreach with our partners. We will have a weatherization assistance program that couples with our Department of Energy Weather Assistance Grants that serves households that have incomes at 200% of the poverty level or below. We have a rental rehab program, then a program that is straight for HVAC replacement of non-functioning air conditioning, heating units. Other than our weatherization assistance program, all of these are targeted at households with, with incomes at 80% or below. On maintaining housing stability, we're aligning with an initiative that Metro Social Services has done for anti-displacement. We're targeting ours on MDHA tenants, providing renter counseling for tenants that may be at risk of losing their housing because of a lease violation or close to a lease violation, so that we can maintain housing stability for our tenants. And this is for incomes at or below 60%. These are all of the activities that we propose to support facilities and services for the homeless and persons with AIDS. As you would imagine, all of our CDBG and Hopwa funding that is not administration is included here. But I want to call to the first row of CDBG services for the homeless, where we actually use block grant funding. We partner with the Metro Homelessness Commission and MDHA's Rental Assistance Department, and persons who are homeless that find housing through these programs are eligible for up to $1,000 of first month's rent, rent and utility deposits to be paid to the landlord or utility provider to help overcome those initial housing barriers. For creating pathways to self-sufficiency for low and moderate income persons and families, we propose a new activity, which is employment services, to open up Section 3 opportunities. Section 3 opportunities are provided when any kind of construction activity is undertaken with HUD funds. So MDHA housing that is being built, as well as housing that we proposed to fund with home or CDBG, or even if we do a public facilities project, any construction project, contractors have to provide us with a plan to hire low-income persons or businesses in the area and provide them opportunities. The challenge has been is we don't have many qualifying individuals or businesses on our list for these contractors to reach out to. This is our really only option of getting kind of at a local hire. So we are proposing to partner with our recapitalization department to connect residents and low-income persons living in or around our properties, or even in Davidson County, to these Section 3 opportunities, so that our contractors can have a more robust Section 3 plan and that we can create economic opportunities for low and moderate income persons. We also propose microenterprise assistance, targeted to the 26 census tracts that we defined as underserved, with the 70% of the households as low income. A microenterprise is defined as a business of five or less employees, one of which the owner is low income. Then finally, we're also going to support number four through providing youth programs. We propose continuing our traditional summer youth. This has been a very popular and effective program that serves over 1,200 youth every year. This is not just a summer camp. These are constructive academic programs. We require that providers have at least a job skills component or a healthy lifestyle component, and we partner with close to 30 nonprofits or public agencies every year. We also propose continuing to support the Metro's Opportunity Now program that provides employment opportunities for youth. Revitalize distressed neighborhoods and underserved areas. We define these areas as those 26 census tracts that are deeply low income. Our first year, we do not program more than $200,000 to public facilities or improvements. We will be working with our planning department and other metro agencies to define the, identify needs in these areas. We will propose in subsequent years, increasing the funding with what is, will be available after the 108 loan payment to make more impactful projects. And then here's how we, our budget for all of our administration, and this is just administration undertaken by MDHA, and then our Section 108 loan payment. So you can see, this chart shows how we address each priority with our funds. Priority number two has 28%. Priority number one, 27%. That is because the home allocation is much less than CDBG for us to work with, but we do think that the biggest priority is to create new affordable housing. Together, these comprise over 50% of the use of all of our grant funds. This is the percent of funds going to our target areas. And you can go back to the previous slides where I had a column on each of the priority areas on, on if they were specifically targeted to one of our geographics. So for example, with, these are public facilities and services for the homeless. CW is countywide. I did mention earlier, Hopwa is the only program that we have that we can serve outside of Davidson County, and this can be utilized within our Metropolitan Statistical Area. NSCNI is our Napier-Sudicum-Choice Neighborhoods area. HTA are our housing target areas. And then CDBGT is the target area. And then CDBGT is the target area. So this is how we propose to allocate funds. If it's not listed here, it's either countywide unless it's Hopwa and it's in the MSA. So how can you, the public, participate and comment on this plan? Today is the first of four public hearings. We will have one on Monday, May twenty-first, at five-thirty at our Levy Place Community Room. We will have one on Wednesday, May twenty-third, at eleven-thirty at the Hispanic Family Foundation. Spanish translation will be available, and children are welcome. Our final public hearing will be held until May thirty-first, I mean, will be held on May thirty-first at five-thirty. The public comment is open, period is open until four PM on June the seventh. These are the various ways that you can comment. You can submit your comments electronically. You can fax them, mail them, hand-deliver them to us. There are a number of ways that you can provide your comments. Check our website for updates. And follow us on Facebook or Twitter if you would like to, make sure that you're on our notification for any upcoming opportunities. Please email us at theconsolidatedplan@nashville-mdha.org, and we'll make sure to put you on our contact list. I'm going to leave this screen up while we open the floor for comments. I do ask if you have a comment, so please come to the podium and state your name and please make your comment. Any comments received at public hearings will be summarized and included in an appendix, as well as all the comments submitted in writing during our comment period. So with that, I will take questions or comments. Seeing, oh, yes. Oh, can you come? Yes, yes, so they can, we're being filmed, so we need, yeah.
Thank you. I'm Keel Hunt. I wondered, first of all, the fourteen council districts, how were they selected?
Okay.
You may have explained that, and then while I'm up here, I just wondered, on the, the map shows this Napier-Sudicum. What is the area we're in now?
We're at the, to start with your second question, we are at John Henry Hill Homes. This is, I think, can be considered part of North Nashville. Napier-Sudicum's off Lafayette. The fourteen council districts were selected based on a review of the appraisal data and those that had at least a forty percent or more increase in home values after the two thousand and seventeen reappraisal. We will be, every year, we will be looking anew at changes in home values, as well as the incomes of census tracts, and maybe adding or removing areas depending on what we're seeing with the data and our analyses. These are our initial census tracts and council districts that we're targeting. Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. I want to thank you for attending today and for your interest in housing and community development. The YouTube video from this film will be posted on our website as soon as we receive it, so you can go back and watch it and hopefully come to one of our other three meetings. Thank you.